Item number 10, subject: Stage 3 drought update.
Okay, take a moment for our staff to settle in. Ms. Dyer, whenever you're ready.
All right, good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name's Kelly Dyer. I'm the Water Supply Manager, and I'll be giving the drought update for today. So first, I'll talk about our drought status, the demand status, the water supply status of each of our sources, and our water supply strategy. And at the end, we have Jill Zachary, the Parks and Rec Director, here to give an update on De La Guerra Plaza as well. So drought status, it's no secret that we're still in a drought. So in our area, we're in a severe drought condition. What has changed on this is the rest of the state is starting to look a little dry as well. In our region, Santa Barbara, we have already experienced the seven driest consecutive years in recorded history, which is over 100 years of records. And we're currently in the eighth year of drought. So we have maintained our drought emergency declaration. Demand status, this is our tracking of monthly conservation. So we had a 31% reduction for the month of October, and our 12-month running average is 29%, very close to the 30% target. At this point, we're not concerned about the conservation. We would like to see that target continue to be met at 30%, but we'll continue to monitor it closely. This is our water sales by revenue. The reason we show this chart is because the majority of our water fund revenues come from volumetric charges. So it's very dependent on the amount of water that's actually used. And for right now, our FY '19 revenues are projecting, the actual revenues are very close to the projections. There was a dip here in October. The reason for that is because of the timing and delay of when payments and invoices are sent out. So for our water supply status, Gibraltar Reservoir is currently at about 2,700 acre feet. The water quality does still remain poor with turbidity and TOC levels. However, we're able to treat some of that water and are diverting enough to keep the hydroelectric plant running. And then we're blending that water with our other sources to meet our water quality requirements. The diversions began back in May and have been consistent. And there is a project going on this fiscal year up at Gibraltar where we're going to be replacing the diversion meter. Our current meter does meet state requirements for accuracy. However, we are going to be upgrading. It's a very old meter that's been up there for a long time. So we're going to be replacing it. That will probably be a couple weeks of downtime where we'll have to shut down diversions for that project. Kachuma storage is currently at 59,000 acre feet. That's 31% of capacity. The city's portion of that storage is 7,100 acre feet. We currently have the most Kachuma allocation or Kachuma storage of all the member units currently. And if conditions remain dry through this winter, the Combe Emergency Pumping Facility will be needed. That is when the lake levels would drop below the intake tower, and so we'd have to pump the water up to the intake in order to get it to the south coast. So Combe will be deciding on that this spring if we don't get any sufficient rainfall. I wanted to just point out some difference. This is a chart showing the Kachuma storage from the last drought, which is the black line, versus Kachuma storage in the current drought, the green line. And there's a lot of things that have changed since the last drought, one being that we now have state water which is conveyed through Kachuma. We've had about 60,000 acre feet of imported water that's been conveyed through there. It's not necessarily really stored in the lake all that much. We had a couple of years when we got up to about 3,000 acre feet of imported water and storage. It's usually just passed through, but what it does, just like desalin, recycled water, or other supplies, is it helps us to offset our use of Kachuma and preserve our carryover. Other changes have been that we now have more environmental requirements. We've released about 25,000 acre feet of water for the Steelhead Habitat downstream. And then the biggest difference, I believe, is that we've had just no inflows. It's been such a dry and very long drought period that we haven't had the natural inflows. And just to point that out, here we are, and for five years in a row, our inflows were less than 5,000 acre feet. And whether that low, none of that is really going to the Kachuma member units. Kachuma Project was, the intent of it was that we would only receive water that would have otherwise gone to the ocean, so it has to be large storm flows and a very watershed before it would be counted as project water. When it's this dry, it belongs to downstream water rights. And this shows our Kachuma storage and allocations in the current drought. I wanted to just talk about what was contemplated in our master contract environmental documents. There was modeling that was done that supported an operational yield of 25,700 roughly acre feet per year for all the Kachuma member units. And in that modeling, it was assumed that the member units would take 20% shortages once the storage level reached 100,000 acre feet. It also assumed a minimum pool of 12,000 acre feet, and there isn't a real clear definition of what the minimum pool is for, but there's various things like anticipated future sedimentation, water quality, recreation, fish, you know, potential fish needs. So there's various things it could be used for. In our current drought, you can see, once the reservoir dropped below 100,000, there was a 100% allocation that was given by the Bureau of Reclamation. In that year, the Kachuma member units all do supply planning, as you are well aware. We do our projections out for several years in advance. And so, once the water is allocated, we're then able to figure out how we use it in conjunction with our other supplies. And most, if not all, of the member units ended up carrying their water over and trying to stretch it out. So even though 100% was allocated, we all, in practice, had taken the 20% reduction because we didn't use it, we carried it over. The following year, we had a 45% allocation, and then that was followed by two years of zero allocations. So this was much greater shortages than the member units had ever been contemplated from supplies from the project. And I think it's pretty remarkable that we made it through this drought, and everyone was able to continue to supply water to their communities, given these cutbacks in water. And also, our minimum pool was maintained. So the total storage of the lake never dropped below 12,000. The lowest storage was about 14,000. So unless there's any questions on that, I was going to move on to imported water.
Go ahead, please.
Okay, so we're continuing to maximize delivery to Kachuma. It's about 280 acre feet per month of deliveries for the city.
Ms. Dyer, councilmembers, then, does have a question?
Okay.
You go back to this slide. So just this slide and then the one on Slide 12, but this one first. So the bump up from the 0% allocation to the 40% allocation, what, did it rain at that time, or is that state water or combination?
That was a significant rain event in 2016.
And then the allocation went up to 40%?
Forty. Right, reclamation had wanted to give a mid-year allocation, so they gave us 40%, followed by another 40% at the beginning of the next water year. They didn't want to allocate 80% all at once, so they spread it out.
And on each of these that are shown, do those allocations match what our requested allocation was?
They do, except for this year. We currently received a 20% initial allocation, although all the Kachuma member units jointly had requested 40% based on our modeling. And as you can see, several years ago, when the storage level was at similar levels, we received a 45% allocation. What happened was, Kachuma member units jointly requested 40%, and then the county, and passed it on to the county, who then provided their own cover letter with a separate request for a zero allocation, and then a compromise of giving us 20 now and then seeing what happens later. There's really no basis for, there was no data provided that's supporting the county's request.
I agree. And I just want to, I'm back on this one too, just to be sure that it's clear. So at a 40% allocation, that was at 100,000 acre feet of storage, and we had been given 100% allocation when we were at 75,000 acre feet. So the asking for the 40% allocation isn't out of the norm or out of line with the trend that we're seeing on this.
At that point, we requested 80%, but they split it up into 40 and 40. So effectively, it was an 80% allocation.
Okay, and still not out of line with the trend that we're seeing?
Correct. That one, it was, you know, we all agreed upon the allocation at that point, that 80% was appropriate.
And you all meet together and jointly discuss modeling results and...
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, go ahead, please.
Imported water, so we've continued to maximize delivery to Kachuma at 280 acre feet per month. The city's imported water available, we have zero in Kachuma. That's because we've been passing it through, and we have about 800 acre feet in San Luis Reservoir. The final allocation for 2018 was 35% from the State Water Project, Table A. They should be coming out with an initial allocation for 2019, and it usually comes out at the end of November. Haven't received it yet, so we'll be watching for that. And supplemental water purchases, we did purchase 1,500 acre feet from Mojave Water Agency this year. And if conditions continue to be dry, we anticipate we'll have to purchase an additional 2,000 acre feet next spring. That also assumes a 35% allocation from the State Water Project. So it's really to fill the gap in order to keep the pipe flowing full. Our current water debt is about 3,700 acre feet. That's a pretty manageable level. We're not too concerned. It has been higher in the past. We were able to pay off some of our debt with a purchase from the City of Santa Maria that we used to pay down our debt. So our groundwater, we are continuing to monitor seawater intrusion and our water levels. We have about 60 monitoring wells, and we have also updated our supply projections based on a 2018 USGS Sustainability Report, where they updated modeling of the sustainable yield of the groundwater basin and looking at seawater intrusion and water levels over a 10-year drought period. And so, at this point, we have our wells shut down, but we are planning on turning four out of nine of them online this spring if it continues to be a dry winter. Desalination project, it's been, continues to operate in full production. It's been producing very well for us with very good water quality. And we are currently working on an update to council regarding the status of the Water Sales Agreement draft terms. This is the agreement with Montecito Water District. It's taking a little bit longer because it's a little challenging with a 50-year agreement. Trying to anticipate everything that might happen in the next 50 years has been difficult in trying to protect ourselves for some of the unknowns that could come out. So regarding recycled water, we have current plant production as at 1.7 MGD, although the design capacity was supposed to be at 3 MGD. We are currently working through legal remedies to address the capacity issues and get it back up to operating at 3 MGD. However, the plant is online and is currently meeting all the demands on the recycled water system. So for our supply strategy, this is based on our adopted Long-Term Water Supply Plan, which had a strategy to keep our demands down. It actually projected our demands would go down over time despite increases in population. And it was also based on the worst drought of record, 1947 to 52, which is now the second worst drought. We also have a water shortage contingency plan which provides guidance on how we would achieve demand reductions during shortages. So it outlines three drought stages, and it also includes desalination reactivation. That's really, has been our insurance policy during droughts, to make sure that we have supply. And so during droughts, our drought supplies include increased groundwater pumping. We normally rest our basins during normal and wet years. And we also import state water, that's banked water and purchased water through the State Water Project. That supply also is not normally used in normal to wet years. We also have planned demand reductions, which are done through adjustments to water rates, regulations as needed, and increased outreach. And then finally, desalination as well. So this was on the left-hand side. This was our planned water supplies according to our Long-Term Water Supply Plan, and it shows the 20% reductions from the Kachuma Project. And then this on the right is what has actually happened. And it's a pretty drastic difference between our surface water. This line here is our Kachuma and Gibraltar surface water supplies. This was planned, and this is what we actually received. So significant cutbacks in our surface water supplies because of how dry the drought conditions that we've had. So this is our current water supply strategy. We're currently in year eight, and we look out a few years. So for this year, we're planning on using, the purple is recycled water, the medium blue is Kachuma water, so most of that is carryover from previous years. We have Gibraltar admission tunnel. We have, yellow is groundwater. Green is our State Water Project. We're assuming a 35% allocation. Orange would be supplemental purchases to make up the difference, to keep the pipe flowing full. And then green is, the lighter green is desal. So looking out ahead, we have sufficient supplies to meet our demands until 2021. We do have a gap here, but we feel that's manageable and we have options to address that. So we'll be reassessing this again in the spring, once we know what our rainfall has been. As I understand, it's supposed to rain tomorrow, so Wednesday afternoon, from what I hear, it's going to be probably less than an inch, so probably want to stay off the roads. What, sorry, what did you say?
Knock the dust down.
Yeah, it'll knock the dust down. And here I have Jill Zachary to discuss an update on De La Guerra Plaza. This is something that came up in a previous drought update.
Very good, Ms. Zachary.
Mayor Murillo, councilmembers, based on the discussion by council at the last drought update, we spent some time sort of looking at the, what had been going on in De La Guerra Plaza essentially since 2014, which is when the department, as part of its city effort to respond to the drought, put together its drought response plan. De La Guerra Plaza was one of those locations in our inventory where we actively looked to reduce our water use for a number of reasons. One, it's not an active play. Our focus in our drought plan is to make sure that our playing fields continue to be irrigated because children and adults are playing on them in order to maintain the turf. So in 2014, we actually reduced our water use by 38%, looking over our numbers. And then we further continued to reduce it over subsequent years, in part as the city's demonstration in its response to the drought, in part because we found the water that we were using was really needed in other locations, particularly to support active use. And then there's always the cost of water, which has increased over those years as well. So trying to balance all of those issues. If council would like us to go back to irrigating and taking care of the plaza in a way that we did right around when the drought was declared, we believe it would cost us about $9,000 to get to sort of the status quo of what we had, and that's labor to renew the soil. We'd have to go seek out stolons to replant grass areas. We'd have to test and repair the irrigation, to fertilize, all the things you can imagine you'd have to do to revitalize a section of turf. And then to maintain it, the annual maintenance, our estimates would be about $21,000 a year. So you imagine, between now and the end of the fiscal year, if we were to take on turf renewal, that would be the cost, and then following on, on an annual basis. And again, it includes all of those considerations, as well as the turf renewal that we do after Fiesta. I recall the years when we fenced it off and had to renew the turf. To do the turf renewal just now, we would do something similar. We would fence it off, and it would be fenced off for two or three months in order to achieve those improvements. Did also include a point on this slide, which talks about if we really wanted to go back and really look at installing a more efficient irrigation system, again, in consideration of the fact that we're trying to reduce our water use for the long term, not just as part of the drought. We could do that and probably spend some time really upgrading the soil profile. That's a much larger project, probably on the order of a six-figure project. The irrigation system that's in there right now is almost 30 years old, similar to a lot of the irrigation that you find throughout our city park system, and we're slowly finding ways to upgrade it as we go. So hopefully that answers some of the questions. If you have any other considerations, I'd be happy to answer them.
I'll jump in. I don't see any lights, so I know that in possibly displacing the farmer's market with the police headquarters, the farmer's market new location might be De La Guerra Plaza. Mr. Casey, we would be premature then to take action on restoring the turf if there's some discussion about what to do with De La Guerra Plaza in the future?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, I think that might be prudent just to kind of hold off a couple months and let the police station location play itself out and let the conversation occur a little bit more about if the Cota Street site is looking more viable, where we find a viable alternative for the farmer's market, because it does sound like there's some initial thoughts that maybe with a revisioning of De La Guerra Plaza, like we've talked about years before, it might be a really favorable place for the farmer's market to land. And so I think we wouldn't mind a little time to kind of work with them on that and have that preliminary conversation, and then we bring that back to the full council after the start of the new year as part of the police location option. That might be a good approach.
Very good. We do have a couple of public comments speakers, but when we come back, we could talk about if there is support for this, if De La Guerra Plaza is not used for something else. So, okay, Phil Walker, you're going to be first, and then Robert Burke following. Welcome, Mr. Walker.
Good afternoon, again, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. It's really hard to believe that seven and a half years ago, I got drenched working at El Estero. The coworker didn't feel up to working that evening, and I got 1.25 inches in 35 minutes in 42 degrees. It was a miserable night, but we got through it. And that's the last time that Kachuma actually filled and went down the spillway seven and a half years ago. So all in all, the staff, Department of Water Resources is doing an excellent job considering the hand they've been dealt. One thing, it'd be great to see Montecito get on board. I voted for the desal plan back in 1991 or '90, get on board with it, and who knows? Like I say, Guelita is in the drought too, and they might be knocking on the door one of these days and go back to the original 10,000 acre feet output. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Burke.
Madam Mayor, members. A week ago, Sunday night, I live up in Santa Fe Springs, also known as Shifco, and Sunday, and these are fourplexes that are dotted around, there's about 100 units or so. A week ago, Sunday night, a tree that's on a 10-foot embankment higher than my unit, a large embankment, fell, and it crashed through, the whole tree fell. It crashed through the fence up there, and it crashed through my fence and landed, the crown landed on my patio. I did not know anything happened until the maintenance man knocked on my door and said, "Hmm." And so, but my, since we have so many of the bright minds here today, I'm curious about whether it was the drought that may have been responsible for that, what the condition of the trees are in the city, and maybe just, you know, get some words of wisdom as far as how to maintain the health of the trees and prevent any, you know, accidents. Had that tree fallen three inches to the left, it would have crashed right into the roof. So talking about prime planting for a tree falling with a disaster, you know, it was, it avoided major damage. So I leave that to the council, whether we could, you know, have some kind of words of wisdom on that. Thanks. I mean, I'm thinking specifically of the parks, as well as how individual owners can take a look at tree maintenance, because I know it's, you know, trees are sanctified beings in Santa Barbara, so I would appreciate some kind of comments. Thanks.
We'll close our public comment. And Ms. Zachary, you are familiar with the trees in the parks and our street trees. A quick comment from you on that question? Are they suffering from the drought, I think?
Mayor Murillo and councilmembers, yes, we've had an increased loss of trees as a result of the drought, and also trees that don't get adequate water are more susceptible to disease, and disease can affect their lifespan as well. As part of our efforts during the drought response, we really initially focused and continue to focus on young trees. So you'll see the gator bags, the green bags around the tree trunks of the younger trees, because those are the ones that actively get water for the first three to five years. And then also our historic trees, where we've been able to install watering devices. There are tens of thousands of trees throughout the city, and so sometimes we could lose a tree as a result of the drought, or there could have been something else that was going on.
Thank you. Thank you for that question, Ms. Burke.
Madam Mayor, if I could, we also, you know, the Water Conservation Department group has been, you know, encouraging conservation, wanting people to let their lawns go. We don't want people to stop watering their trees and have, they've developed some videos and materials that are available on our website, which, here's the phone number and the website to go, where you can see advice on how to properly water your trees, you know, if it's around the drip line, and then there's probes that can be used. So there are some materials available through our Water Conservation Group on how to water trees.
Very good. So back to the council, Mr. Dominguez, questions or closing comments since we're...
I just want to thank staff for the great efforts and for the report today, and move to accept the report if you want a motion, otherwise.
Very good. Ms. Sneddon?
I'd second that motion if that's necessary to accept the report. Back to Slide 23, I just want to use that for two things. One, to really highlight what a remarkable job you do with balancing all these different parts of our water portfolio. It's really, it's really remarkable how you're able to do that, and especially when conditions change each year. I mean, from year to year, what you're using to balance really changes. I also want to use this to emphasize that we're at 30% extraordinary conservation, and that even if other water availability came up, that we still would need to rely on.
that we still would need to rely on that conservation. And so we're not to a place yet of rebound or being back out of the drought or anything even close to that. And I appreciate that, and we've talked about this at Water Commission, I appreciate that you continue to put that 30% on there to show what it is that the public is doing in their part for that extraordinary conservation and that we still, still need to keep that up. And then just planning ahead, I'm noticing also that we'll have more water purchases planned. And is that just in case? Or is that, that's in the plan that we'll need to be increasing purchases to make up for?
Madam Mayor, councilmember Sneddon, we are planning to keep the pipe flowing full. So in the next, if we don't get some reprieve this winter, we're looking at additional 2,000 acre feet purchased this fiscal year, which we did budget for. And then we'll have to just continue planning going forward because the state water really is a critical part of our water supply going forward in a drought. If we start extending this chart out farther, what will happen is our groundwater basins will eventually be depleted. And then really, we'll be relying on desal and state water. And then, you know, some, something to fill the gap, whether it's additional conservation or expanding desal or a combination of both.
So I think, thank you. I think it's really important to emphasize here that we're, it's not just an extended status quo drought. It's continued pressure in all of these different areas, including added purchases, more conservation, and still having a gap in the future. So I just thank you for managing it for us.
Thank you.
Well, so when we say we have water through 2020, you mean October of 2020?
This would go through October of 2021.
Okay. So the takeaway for folks today is we have adequate water supply for now, but keep conserving?
Correct. It's really important that people continue to conserve, you know, even with, I think there's been, you know, when we reactivated desalination, I think some people thought, oh, the problem is solved. It really isn't. We really, it was appropriately sized. It's really expensive to expand it. And part of our strategy in our supply mix is the 30% conservation, which we need to emphasize.
And then I see in the report that the NOAA forecasters are saying there's an equal chance we'll be above-normal rain going forward, and there's an equal chance of below-normal, above and below. So sometime, they can tell us it's raining next week, but not four months from now, right? So anyway, keep conserving. All in favor of receiving this report? Aye. Any against? Okay, good. Thank you. And our next item is council-